Do you see it?
Yeah.
I've been doing this before. You love to have water, but I've got a energy drink. It's just in case I start coughing. I'm going to be in the mascot tomorrow. She's going to wear a bear costume.
No way. And dance in the parking lot.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, I know. I'm really excited.
Good for her. She has an acting career ahead of her.
I told her not to tell anyone, so she's surprised. She's in the bear suit.
It used to be a guy named Robert Booth. I guess he's gone now.
The local police officer. Police officer, she. Come back. I thought the boys scouts in the back were going to leave us at the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you remember the Pledge of Allegiance?
I do.
I'm a captain.
I do.
I make it all too, yeah. It's fine. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic. See, we're not a democracy, we're a republic, just like North Korea. Yeah. Yes. You got it.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We have a full house tonight, but I don't think everybody's going to necessarily stay the whole time, so I think the scouts will have seats eventually. And it's wonderful to see everybody here. It's wonderful to see people who want to advocate. It's wonderful to see the scouts who want to get a lesson in civic engagement, and I hope that we are all the best examples of ourself in that regard. So first, I will call the meeting to order. Clerk, would you please establish a quorum?
Councilmember Lang?
Here.
Councilmember Meadows?
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fliger?
Here.
Mayor Daley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, and Councilmember Lang, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd be glad to. Please stand if you're able and join me in Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a closed session tonight, but the council took no action, so there's nothing to report. And do we have any changes to the order of the agenda from colleagues? All right. For those of you who are here tonight to comment on Agenda Item Number Nine, Ten, the Dog Park item. If your comment pertains specifically to whether or not we shall use public art funding or other sources of funding, then that comment will be taken when that Agenda Item comes up. Everybody with a comment that pertains to any other issue relative to the Dog Park will be making those comments next under Items Not on the Agenda. Because the question before council tonight relative to the Dog Park is solely whether or not we will fund the art elements of the park out of public art funds or general fund or Parkinloo funds. So that said, we'll go to public comments. Speaker cards, how many do we have?
For Item Ten, we received fourteen, but I do know of some that are not on the agenda, as you stated, but I don't know all of them. I don't know what all of them. And then we do have two speakers on Not on the Agenda that has nothing to do with Item Ten.
Okay. Are any of those commenters specifically going to comment on the funding of the art or is everybody going to comment on a design element? Okay. Then you'll make two comments. You'll make one comment, right? One comment for an item not on the agenda and one comment when the Agenda Item comes up. Okay, so we will assume then that other than Ms. Valades' comment, that they are all four items not on the agenda. All right?
And it looks like we have more coming, so I believe it's going to be close.
Fair. Everybody will have one minute for their comment.
Including the Not on the Agenda speakers as well?
All the Not on the Agenda comments are one minute each. One minute each tonight.
The first speaker is Sasha Bar... I'm sorry, Baraci?
Baraci.
Baraci, okay.
Hi. I don't even know if this is relevant, but I really love the Dog Park. I love the people there. I sometimes bring my dog twice a day. I have eleven-year-old twins and they call it their happy place. Everyone loves the beautiful tree, and it's a small dog park, but it's always got parking, and it's in a great location, and I just want to make sure that you guys don't get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was good.
The next speaker is... I'm sorry, Chloe. Chloe?
Good evening, City Council. I'm Chloe Chong. I'm a high school student in the Bay Area and a lifelong Los Altos resident. I'm here to comment about a community shuttle because we need one more than ever. I've seen the 2018 downtown vision for Los Altos Plan and how it includes a cable car, and I think the idea is terrific, but right now, all we need is a simple van going in a loop to serve as a much-needed transportation alternative. In a survey I sent to local high schools in the town choir, one mom responded, she can't get a job until she stops being a taxi mom. Others are concerned about their environmental impact, that a shuttle would solve a lot of problems for a lot of kids and cut down on car trips and the environmental impact. This isn't just an environmental issue, it's an access issue. It helps parents have time for their work after resting after a long day. It helps kids develop their independence, allowing them to figure out how to get places without always needing to ask for a ride. Transportation shapes our spaces and allows us to keep communal spaces like tennis courts at Los Altos High and have space for future recreational space since we wouldn't need more parking lots to accommodate a growing population. Overall, we would promote safer streets for people to start biking and walking more with less cars on the streets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick question for you. One quick question. Have you taken the shuttle in Mountain View? Have you used their shuttle service? And what did you think?
It was great.
Then it sounds like something we should talk about. Thank you.
The next speaker is Arthur Whipple.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for letting me talk to you for a few moments. I'm Arthur Whipple, resident of the city and a director with Resilient Los Altos. I wanted to give you a little bit of information about what we're doing for the city, for our community. We have a number of projects, but there were two that I thought would give you a really quick update on. One, we have developed a mechanism to get information from trained residents in the city to the city's emergency operations center during an emergency. We've developed a system in concert with the city staff. We've had several proof-of-concept presentations and have addressed the comments that came from those presentations, and will be training many of our certs and hams in September to be able to use this. Basically, the way the system works is you record information onto your cellphone. If there's cellphone capability, it uploads it and downloads it into a server at the EOC. If it doesn't, it stores all the information till you can get to Wi-Fi, and then we have Starlink locations several places across the city so that we can get that information up. So when the cellphone towers are down, we still are able to get this information together. So I think this situation is going to provide much more timely and complete information to the city and will allow the city to allocate scarce resources in a much better way than the current windshield surveys and the preliminary safety assessments come out of the neighborhoods at this point. So I think that's really good. We've had a great relationship with the city about making this happen, and so we're making really good progress. The other area, which I think came up in a city council meeting a couple of months ago, is really focusing on expanded support for seniors in Los Altos.
Hey, Art, your time has run out, so I'll ask you a question to allow you to continue. What else did you want to say?
What else did we?
Yeah, what else are you... I'm asking you a question because you can respond, right? That's the point of the question.
Almost done. The other project is supporting seniors. One of the things that we're doing is that we have seniors die in these sorts of situations. So one of the things we're doing is we're reaching out to our seniors. In the city, we have information in the five target languages that are going out, and we have go-bags that have been targeted for be able to happen to work with seniors in that situation. So I want to thank you for the continued support the city has been given, and what I'd like to do is to give each one of you one of these go-bags.
That's wonderful, but maybe we can just set them over there and we'll grab them on the way out.
Okay.
Thank you, Art. I appreciate that.
The next speaker is Carl von Reis.
Hi, Councilmembers. Carl von Reis, member of the Environmental Commission. I'm speaking today as an individual, of course. I know there's other people that want to comment on the Hillview Dog Park, and I have previously sent you comments, this was last year, on my thoughts on that. Generally, I would prefer a more natural surface than what is planned based on the two products under review. I don't think they meet the environmental standards that we should strive for as a city of Los Altos based on our cap goals. And I have visited the Cuesta Park recently, and they had a DG area that had a lot of natural areas around it, and that seemed to satisfy my dog. And I think generally, I would be more prone to bring any dogs that I'm sitting or my dog to a more natural area. And I think generally, you get more use of it, of the entire, for the ecosystem, if it has some life all around, even when people aren't using it. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Laura Fay.
Good evening. You're going to hear many reasons to reject artificial turf at the Hillview Dog Park this evening, so what is the alternative? I'm going to talk, which is very specifically about decomposed granite. Cities around the Bay Area are successfully using decomposed granite in their dog parks, including San Jose, Palo Alto, Mountain View, Santa Clara, and many, many others. One such example is the city of Sunnyvale, which requires decomposed granites for all of their parks by mandate. A couple of quotes from their staff. According to Bennett Chun, the senior engineer at Department of Public Works, Sunnyvale, he says, "Lakewood Park calls for decomposed granite with a binder that is natural, non-toxic, colorless, and odorless." And according to Jim Stark, superintendent of parks at Sunnyvale, staff like decomposed granite as it's easy to clean, easy to keep clean, doesn't retain the smell of urine, and is easy to maintain and repair. The reasons to choose decomposed granite is clear. It's natural and durable, including natural stabilizers, fits with the natural and rural character of Los Altos, it does not contain PFAS, it does not shed microplastics, it does not end up in the landfill or incinerators, and it does not have a fossil-fuel-based manufacturing process.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. We've run through a lot of time. And just a reminder, some of you may choose to cede time to one another. If one person represents views shared by many, that is a solution to provide more time for those views to be expressed. So up to a total of five minutes.
The next speaker is Lonnie Gary.
Thank you. My name is Lonnie Gary. I'm a member of the Los Altos Rotary Climate Action Committee, but tonight I speak only for myself or other like-minded citizens. You may hear the vendors claim it's safe, there are no harmful chemicals. But when a vendor says safe, I ask, safe for whom and for how long? Independent tests, not industry brochures, have found that PFAS and turf, these are forever chemicals that never break down, they leach into our soil, our water, and they build up in our bodies. Turf also sheds microplastics and invisible pollutants that end up in rivers, fish, and yes, even our drinking water. The reality is, the majority of artificial turf products contain PFAS, and many safety complaints ignore the long-term effects. Industry-funded studies often omit newer independent findings. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sheri Auerbach.
So I too am a member of the Los Altos Rotary Club and the co-chair of the Climate Action Committee, but tonight I speak as a Los Altos resident. Artificial turf is often marketed as water-saving, but in a high-use dog park, that promise simply doesn't hold up. To keep it sanitary, it must be regularly hosed down, using enough water pressure to push waste and bacteria through its layers. For deep cleaning, it requires pressure washing to remove dirt, debris, urine, and feces. Pressure washers strip away the infill material, which then has to be replaced. The turf also needs periodic treatment with cleaning solutions to break down waste and control odor, followed by thorough rinsing to prevent chemical residue. The synthetic fibers need fluffing with water to keep their artificial appearance intact. All of this adds up to a constant hidden water demand, hardly the savings many imagine. Over the life of the park, these ongoing cleaning demands will consume thousands of gallons of water at a time when conservation is critical. Makes no sense to install a source that pretends to save water, but in practice, doesn't.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bonnie Burdette Walker.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Bonnie Burdette Walker. I'm a member of the Los Altos Rotary Climate Action Committee, but I speak tonight only for myself and for others who share these concerns. Artificial turf, no matter how modern its marketing, remains a plastic product. It's not a green solution. It poses documented risk to human and environmental health, contributes to the urban heat-island effect, sheds microplastics into our waterways, and ultimately becomes landfill waste. Installing it at the Hillview Dog Park would directly contradict the city's own environmental commitments. The Environmental Commission's 2025 work plan calls for expanding green infrastructure, reducing total waste, prioritizing green landscaping. The artificial turf undermines all three. This is not just about one dog park, it's about whether our city aligns its actions with its values. The long-term cost to our environment, our health, and our credibility are far greater than any short-term benefit. Please reject artificial turf at Hillview and choose a solution that reflects Los Altos' leadership on sustainability and commitment to a healthy, resilient future. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrea Wald.
Much has been said about the environmental risks of artificial turf. I want to highlight another reason to reject it for the Hillview Dog Park, its hidden high-maintenance demands. Manufacturers promote artificial turf as low maintenance, but in the high-use dog park, the opposite is true. Urine and organic waste seep into the turf's fibers and backing layers, creating an ideal environment for bacteria and mold. Warm weather intensifies persistent odors that are nearly impossible to eliminate. Even with enzyme-based cleaners, effective sanitation requires frequent labor-intensive application. Routine rinsing will not remove contaminants lodged deep in the structure. The result is an ongoing cycle of costly cleaning and continuing hygiene concerns. There are not one-time inconveniences, they are permanent conditions of artificial turf in the dog park, and unlike natural or decomposed granite surfaces, turf cannot be restored, it has to be replaced. The promise of low maintenance is an illusion. In reality, artificial turf in this setting will drain city resources, create ongoing odor problems, and shorten the life of the park. Please reject artificial turf for Hillview. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Hoffman.
Cool. Okay, here we go. Okay, so...
By the way, you have one minute, just so you know.
Oh, sorry. Oh, one minute. This is just, it's going to be very quick.
Okay.
Okay, artificial turf stinks, literally. It's made from a toxic combination of plastic that off-gasses a rancid smell. I've experienced this unpleasant odor firsthand, now whenever I play tennis at Los Altos High School, because a perfectly good natural grass field was turned into an artificial turf soccer field in 2022. It was even worse when my son had to retrieve a tennis ball from the field, and he said the smell was really disgusting. That's all I have to say. That was probably less than a minute, right?
Very good. Thank you.
The next speaker is Peter Fay.
Thirty-year Los Altos resident. Artificial turf is the wrong choice for Hillview Dog Park because in the end, it all ends up in the landfill. Manufacturers may talk about recyclable designs, take-back programs, but the reality is stark. Moulded turf is made of multiple plastics, infill materials, and adhesives fused together, making separation and recycling nearly impossible. Add sand, antimicrobial coatings, and UV stabilizers, and recyclability drops even further. The ultimate responsibility to dispose of it would fall to the city every eight or ten years, at a cost in both dollars and environmental harm. In practice, the overwhelming fate of artificial turf is the landfill. Los Altos should not commit to a product with built-in waste problem and recurring disposal costs. Please reject artificial turf at Hillview and choose a truly sustainable alternative. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bryce Hoffman. Bryce?
If he's not here, we can go to the next and just move him to the back of the queue. We'll assume he concurs with your comments then, okay? Thank you.
The next speaker is Janet... Sorry, Janet Harding.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff and other community members. My name is Janet Harding, and I've lived in Los Altos for seventy-two years. I consider myself a native Las Alton, and I'm the product of Los Altos public schools. I even attended Hillview Elementary School from first to third grade. I'm also a member of the Los Altos Rotary Climate Action Committee. I'm speaking for myself and others with the same thinking. Lots of people have alerted me to their concerns about AstroTurf. And you may hear vendors of artificial turf claim that their product is 100% recyclable. The reality is, in practice, there are no large-scale, cost-effective turf... Oh, okay. Please, in your evaluation of services for Hillview Dog Park, I urge you to ask for documented proof from your vendors. Thank you for all you do for all of us.
Thank you.
We only have a few more speakers, so what I'll do is I'll read out three names at a time so you can kind of like queue up. The next speaker is Kurt Schwartz, followed by Arthur Stern and Jackie Wright.
Hi, Kurt Schwartz. I've been here for twenty-nine years. Had an eighteen-year-old dog that never took to the dog park. Now we got a new puppy, been taking him every day for about the last year and a half. I like the current dog park. One thing that I would like to do, and you guys can control, is budgets, right? How can we save money? What I'd like to ask of you is to have the Colander Associates talk to people that show up at the dog park every day. I show up every day at five. A lot of people that you've spoken to show up between five to seven. Talk to us. Ask us our opinion. Maybe there's a way that collaboratively we can help you come to a good solution. I mean, we just had a break in the water main five months ago. Why don't we put a fountain right there where it broke? You know, things like this are pretty simple things to keep the current dog park really functional, and if you take it away, what are you going to use that land for? I think as great as a dog park right now, let's just spend a little money fixing up what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Arthur Stern, followed by Jackie Wright and Alyssa Kansas.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Stern, and I live on Tyndale Street, which is very close by in Los Altos. I have two small dogs, and we use the Small Dog Park now at the community center and love it. And there are a whole bunch of us and our dogs who love using it, and I think it requires very little maintenance. I hope that whatever we do, we can preserve that park. And so I agree with Kurt. I agree with Sasha Braz, who spoke first. I hope we can keep the current park. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackie Wright, followed by Alyssa Kansas and Tammy Mulcahy.
Hi, I'm here to support you in all the good jerk, good work you've been doing on all the parks. This park, the Hillview Park, the McKenzie Park, and even the one that you're about to put downtown Los Altos, I'm all for it. Everybody says, oh, they're taking away Value Park. No, that's okay. You've got a plan. We all know that. So I'm here to give you all the support I can for all the parks. Los Altos really needs them. And I've been, by the way, sixty-two-year resident of Los Altos. I grew up in the Highlands. And I lost my place. That's okay. Now that the dust has settled on this park, I think everybody's going back to, we kind of like it, just the way it is. We like the dirt. I understand, my whole yard has got the artificial turf. I hate it, but it's clean. I mean, to me, it keeps the dog paws from walking in the house. I'm okay with that. But as far as the mud and everything, people just put a towel in the back of their car, and they can get through that. I'm here to give you as much support as I possibly can, and I'm all for keeping the dog park just the way it is.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alyssa Kansas. Not here. Tammy Mulcahy. And lastly, Janine Valades.
Hi, I am Tammy Mulcahy, and I lived in Los Altos a very long time. I worked passionately as a co-chair of a global initiative to address plastic pollution. Plastic is polluting our bodies. Plastic is made from chemicals that are blended together to give the plastic its physical characteristics. These combinations are proprietary, meaning we really don't know what is in a particular plastic. Research has been challenged to get ahead of the curve, so it's been easy for producers to say, oh, well, you know, plastic is not proven to be harmful. But research is catching up. We now know that out of the sixteen thousand chemicals blended to make plastic, four thousand of them so far have been proven harmful, and only 3% of these harmful plastics are regulated. Many of these chemicals are endocrine disruptors. They mess with our hormone systems and cause disease, particularly for fetal and childhood development, and if it affects humans, it also affects animals. We are working globally to eliminate unnecessary plastic for profound reasons. Last thing we need is to add more plastic into our community.
Thank you.
And the last card I have on this is Janine Valades.
Wow. Hello, Janine Valades, disclosures, park commissioner, member of the Climate Action Committee for Rotary, today speaking only my truth and trying not to piss off anybody. I am going to be the lone dissenter in the room. I support the park and its current design, maybe not all the elements, but in terms of the majority of use of artificial turf, along with some smaller areas of stabilized DG and hardscape to complete the park. And importantly, no unstabilized DG, no mulch, chips, gravel, rock or sand. But my endorsement comes with qualifications and those qualifications, which I listed in the letter I wrote to you guys, which I'm not going to be able to get through, maybe I could try, is to basically create a closed system of the dog park so that the runoff goes into the sewer versus the storm drainer into groundwater. So intense filtration, the runoff going into the pipes and then the cleaning enzymatic only, and, and also shade to keep things cool, as well as burst water to occasionally cool when needed. I will not take my dogs to a DG park because they get filthy and they're breathing dust, as am I. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for comments, not on the agenda? Okay.
I'm a high school student, too, put it in the cards, so I don't know.
Oh, we got time for one more. Come on up.
What's a DG park? Decomposed granite. Decomposed granite. Oh, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nissa Consol and I'm 16 years old and a resident of Los Altos. I'm here tonight because the decisions you make now will affect my generation for decades to come. We need to look into the future, not just what's easiest now, but what leaves us with a livable community. Artificial turf might look clean and convenient, but it is made mostly from plastics and rubber, such as petrochemicals and PFAs, and these chemicals will outlast all of us. Over time, they break down into microplastics, which wash into our creek soil and eventually the ocean. And when the turf wears out in eight to 10 years, it can't be recycled in any practical way. Almost all of it ends up in landfills. This means every future replacement creates another massive pile of waste. Please reject artificial turf at the Hillview Dog Park. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any more public comment? Okay. The next lineup on our agenda is our consent calendar. I'll look to my colleagues and see if anybody wants to remove anything from the consent calendar. Seeing no desire to pull anything from the consent calendar, I will say that we're going to accept public comment on the consent calendar now. So any items on that portion of the agenda, now is the time to submit comment cards. All right? Seeing no public comment for the consent calendar, I will look to my colleagues for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, City Clerk, will you call the question?
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fliger?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next is.
I'm sorry, just point of order, Mayor, would it be appropriate to let the audience know that we're not going to take any action, one way or another, on the ground covering for the dog park so that those that commented on it understand that we're not doing anything further than this?
Yes, so, so, let me expand upon the comments that I made at the start of the meeting. We had a meeting in July where we reviewed and approved and unanimously voted to approve the design. That would have been the right time to, to come forward with concerns or remarks about that design. It doesn't mean that we cannot reopen that discussion, however, that would involve putting that item on the agenda as a discreet question to, upon which to deliberate. There are some other implications for that, driven largely by state law and contracting requirements and so forth, such that if we wanted to change the design, which could be done through action of council, we would actually have to hire a new design firm and start the design process again. We aren't at liberty to simply say, we're going to pull artificial turf out of the existing design and replace it with decomposed granite, for example. So council will have the ability to introduce that as a new business item. In fact, at the end of this meeting, when we discuss potential new business to put on future agendas, any one of us can tee that up and with support of, of other council members, put that on the, on a future agenda. But we will not be taking any action tonight on the design of the dog park. Tonight, when we get to agenda item number nine, we will be deliberating over whether or not we use art funds, 10, sorry, I keep saying nine, item 10. We will be deliberating over whether or not we use public art funds to pay for the art elements of the design. So it's a, kind of a wonky budgetary discussion tonight about art in the dog park. And the design was approved in July.
Yeah.
A year ago, July. So, thank you, Councilmember Weinberg for suggesting that. And I hope that that adds some clarification to this process because I think it's, I think some of our residents have been a little bit confused about where we are in the process and what the appropriate avenue is for advocacy and, and voicing concerns. And I appreciate everybody's concerns. I'm sorry, I don't answer questions from the audience, that's not the way this forum works. So, next item on the agenda is voting delegate. Okay, so, this is about the Cal Cities Conference and who's going? So, Councilmember Lang, Councilmember Weinberg. Do either of you expressly want to be the voting delegate?
Could I, before we get to that, could I just give some context? So, just so everyone here understands, some of us here on, on the council, we can remember an instance where a council member in the city was a voting delegate at the Cal Cities Conference and that council member took a, a position on a resolution brought before the body that was not in accord with the majority of what that council had, had decided. So in order to make sure that that doesn't happen here, we've taken the policy of not allowing a member to vote on a substantive measure, not procedural you can, but, but when it comes to a substantive issue, the, the voting member needs to get direction from, from, from the city council. And without direction from a majority of the city council on a substantive issue, the voting member will have to vote no. That's, that's the policy that we've adopted and that's, that's what we're doing here tonight.
Thank you for that explanation. So, do either one of you, let me start with the, the sort of, do either of you not want to do it?
Me.
Okay. And Councilmember Weinberg, do you want to do it?
I've, I've done it before, so I was going to yield to you, I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Why don't you do it and I'll, I'll watch how you do it.
I like the apprentice.
You actually won't, we'll be separated.
I know, but I'll come across the room, I'll bring binoculars.
All right. Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me see if I can give Councilmember Lang some comfort. So I serve on the Cal Cities Board and this conference isn't until October. And so I will know by October if there are any big items that the representatives will need to vote on, so you'll be better prepared. But I agree with what you're saying, I support Councilmember Weinberg being the delegate and you being the alternate, just in case we do have any controversial items. I know Jonathan has been trained and vetted and ready to go to represent us, I've seen, seen him in action before, so I will keep you both posted on any items that we brought forward for voting.
Thank you.
I move we designate Councilmember Weinberg as our delegate.
Friendly amendment, Councilmember Lang to be the alternate.
Yes.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fliger?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item on the agenda is.
Mayor, can I ask a point of order?
Please.
Are the Boy Scouts here for an agenda item or are they just here for?
My understanding is there, is, is, my understanding is that they're interested in understanding how civic government operates and that this is an exercise in that capacity. Am I understanding that correctly? Nod, yes?
Thank you, Mayor, and also the council members. So, actually, the troops are here discussing, here today, we are a climate, a citizenship in the community, so we made it a starter to learn how the good citizen and how to be involved in this, so appreciate all your support.
I think this is a wonderful meeting for you to attend because there's so much civic engagement tonight, so many people interested. No, seriously, I mean it. I mean, who, I wouldn't advocate that they come watch a meeting where nobody shows up and there's no differences of a pick in or anything else. This is how civil societies operate and so this is a wonderful meeting to have you here tonight. Thank you for being here.
So we expect that they're supposed to find me?
Yeah.
And nobody will argue?
We won't take it personally.
That, that's fine. Forty-five minutes, sometimes will even get you through one of my meetings. Maybe not tonight, though, but we'll come close.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wasn't sure if they wanted, if they were here for something specific, so.
All right.
Good luck to you gentlemen, to you scouts.
So, item number nine, we're going to review the main library design concept and we have a staff report on this?
We have the consultants from ABA who are here to present.
Okay, wonderful.
The presentations in your packet as well that you received, a little bit of background, this item's come before council before with the awarding of the contract. And since that time, we've been very busy talking to the community and the library community and we're excited to present to you today, so I'll pass it off to ABA.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Anthony, and staff members, and good evening, members of the council. Thank you very much. I wanted to start by just saying, we're very excited to be here. This is a tremendous opportunity for the city of Los Altos and we're excited to share our progress with you all this evening. So, I'm going to kick us off first by introducing the first slide, which is really about our process. This is our roadmap that we've been through and the roadmap that also lies ahead. And so, one of the things that's really pertinent about this is this roadmap describes the interactions that we've been having with the community, as well as the technical advisory committee, which is comprised of staff, Santa Clara County Library District members, and of course, consultants. So we're very excited again to be here, we are at the culmination at the end of Phase One, which is the Design Alternatives Analysis Phase. So you can see that in that orange box there on the screen where we are and we're excited to share the updates with you. So, along those lines, I would like to quickly recap the outreach and engagement that we've conducted through this Phase One effort. It's comprised of two rounds, really. The first round was built on some tremendous work that was done prior to our involvement. And it was really about validating that work and understanding if that work, number one, is still relevant or if it's changed or need to be reconsidered. So we had a great foundation that was built by the Library Ad Hoc Subcommittee, as you all know. We were able to first go through a staff workshop, followed by a commission meeting, and then ultimately, two rounds of public, open house formats to get community feedback and validation of what we heard from the previous work. So with that, we were able to go away as a design team and come up with some options. And round two represents an opportunity that we had to go back to the community, back to the commission, and review a couple of options based on that feedback that we heard. So tonight, we are here with you all at the end of round two and looking forward again to those next steps, which we'll review shortly. I wanted to touch on this slide, which has to do with the initial proposals that were part of that foundational work. We, through our summary or through outreach, excuse me, were able to talk to the community and the commission about these priorities and proposals and really understand which ones would rise to the top and were more relevant than ever and which ones may still be relevant but need some adjustment and which may fall to the bottom of the priority list but are still on that list. So this just represents a tiered approach to prioritizing those, those initial proposals. This is a lot of text, I don't expect to go through this with you all, but I will say that it was through our outreach with the community and the commission in that second round, we were able to get their feedback on the initial ideas, the two additional original concepts that we came up with, that we took a lot of information from that second round. And from that information, what we're going to show you today is what we are considering the final draft, which looks to really incorporate all of this additional feedback that you see on the screen regarding each of these components of the library. I wanted to highlight quickly that through the outreach, we were very focused as a team on what drives success for the solution to improve the library. And we developed two options, as I mentioned. This slide just shows you that across the spectrum of, of the success criteria that we considered, where we got input and how it was being recorded here, you can see that for the most part, about 61% of the community felt that option two was a much better or better option than what we currently have today at the library. And you can also see here that in general, across the board as a spectrum or bandwidth, you can see that those triangles indicating option one, option two, and kind of how those stacked up against the criteria. So, a good design would not be a good design without goals. And along the entire process, these goals were vetted with the community and with the tech team. These goals are instrumental as we go through the design that you're going to see because we look at making sure we're hitting on all cylinders here, making sure that we're achieving these goals that we set out to achieve from the outset. No goal is achieved in a renovation without understanding what's there. You have a tremendous asset, you have an incredible space already. And foundationally, it is a great platform to build from and to improve upon. Structurally, this building is very robust. We performed a, what we call a facilities assessment of this building. And through that assessment, we're able to identify areas of strength, areas that need improvement. And really, when you think about any improvement, it's not just about the big moves, it's about the building systems, it's about the small things, the things that we all experience. And so when we talk about these options, they're the options that we're going to present tonight, there is a layer to this, it's really important to understand, that while you see something on the screen that is a plan or a rendering, what's behind that is improved acoustics, improved telecom, improved visual acuity through better lighting. All of these things that we experience as humans are so important to this renovation. So with that, this is an existing floor plan, and I'm going to zoom in a little bit, just so we can get a better visual, of the library. As I mentioned, we always start with what's there first and through our deep appreciation of what's there and understanding the opportunities, we're going to walk you through the proposed plan. And I'm going to handoff here to Amy Crawford with ABA, who is the senior interior designer leading the project with me, and she's going to walk you through the design next. Thank you.
Let me just pause you for one moment, so is this the 45 minute mark where you'd like to duck out?
No.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, we'll pause for a moment and let you guys clear out and, and, and then we'll, we'll hear from the interior designer, okay? Thank you. By the way, young scouts, this is much better than Congress. Seriously. Local politics is a better indication of civic engagement and it's a, a better example to follow. Okay, go ahead, sorry for the interruption.
It, it went away. I'm already, I'm already sharing. There we go, okay. Okay. So as Jason mentioned, this is the existing plan as it is today, just want to orient you a bit before we go and look at the proposed conceptual plan. So, up here in the top. So up here in the top, you see a big red arrow. That is coming in from the orchard side, so as if we were walking over from this direction. And this big arrow down here is coming in from the main parking lot. Just on the inside, you've got the lobby there. You've got the staff workspace just to the right, the community room, passport office, restrooms, and staff workspace here to the left. The children's area up here to the left, a variety of seating and shelving. And then way down here on this right side, we've got the Friends of the Library workspace as it is today, as well as some pods that people use for meetings and quiet study. So those are some of the things that I wanted to orient you to before we move on. Right now, the library is one nice, long, continuous, high-volume space. And that's something that we wanted to be able to maintain as we go forward. And actually, that's all I was going to talk about there. So let me... Okay. So this is the proposed conceptual plan. I'll zoom in on it a bit here so you guys can see it a little bit better. So the, a couple of things to note. The children's area here is not in the scope of work for this project. There is a separate project that is going on for that area, so we aren't talking about the children's area today. We went through an evolution of this conceptual plan. And Jason talked about different rounds of feedback that we got from the community. And there were things that we definitely adjusted and changed based on the community feedback. It was really important to hear from them. The restrooms and the Friends of the Library space being the two biggest ones. So there are some big moves, some main moves that we're making in this library that we can really point to and look at very specifically. So one of them is this restroom core here. So this whole area where we have the restrooms and this multi-use room. So you may recall from the previous plan that we looked at, we had a men's room and we had a women's room. We don't currently have any family restrooms. We are looking at maintaining a men's room and a women's room as well as adding a single restroom for those who might feel more comfortable using a single-use restroom. We've also been able to add two family restrooms off of the children's area for families to use directly from there, so they don't have to go all the way around. Another of those big moves that we're doing to respond to those design goals that we heard from the community about is creating this large floor-to-ceiling glass wall that helps to give us, it really gives us a lot of bang for our buck. It does a couple of things for us. So it creates this area that we're calling the marketplace. It's, it's the pot-belly marketplace, so it gives us a little bit of space here to have an active area. So it's a place where people can be a little bit louder. It's, you know, right off of the children's area. So as people are coming in and out of the children's area, this is a space where noise is okay. And as you cross over, go through this glass wall, back to the rest of the library, that's considered a more quiet area. So that glass wall helps to give us that division of space for noise and less noisy. The other thing it does for us is giving us this after-hours or extended-hours space. So it allows the library to, when they're ready to, when they decide that this is something they want to do, to have the space in the lobby and the space in this extended area be accessible for the public extended hours. So not necessarily 24 hours a day, but whatever hours the library determines would be the most useful for the community. So it may be open a couple hours before the library opens and open a couple hours afterwards. So those are a couple of things that that, that space is doing for us. Additionally, as we move forward into future phases and we start talking about furniture and level of flexibility in this space, depending on which direction we go, we could potentially be able to set up this space for different events, perhaps a lecture, perhaps a gallop, whatever might be happening, can be set up in this area, which is supplemental to the community room space. So it, this, this really does a lot for us in this space. Another one of those really big moves that we're making is adding study spaces. We definitely heard from the community that this is a need. Anywhere from people that need to study for an exam, a bar exam, to small group projects for school, anything along those lines. So these rooms will be able to be used for that. Back over here in the restroom core area, we have added what could be considered another meeting room, but we're really calling it a multi-use room. It can be something that staff can use, that people can use for a knitting group or something along those lines. It's in the more active part of the library, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a quiet activity. So we've got a bonus room out here in this area. Another thing that is happening is the consolidation of the staff work area. We currently have the staff separated into two spaces. The majority of them are over here in this large purple area. But currently, the children's staff is over here where you see the multi-use room and the family restroom. So we're able to, through some efficiencies, consolidate all of them over into one area. And they would also have access to use this meeting room for staff meetings and whatnot. One other key thing is that we were able to maintain the location of the Friends of the Library workspace, which is here, with some slight modifications to work a little bit better with the building. And the Friends of the Library sales space, rather than being out here in the open part of the library, it is now in its own special spot in the lobby where it can be an enclosed space that can be closed off at the end of the day and secured. The teams room is still in its current location. The community room is still in its current location. And we really work to prioritize keeping as much of the seating against the windows that face the orchard as we can. That, I think, is everything I wanted to go over here. What I'm going to move to next is a couple of 3D renderings. And it's important to note that this project is still in its conceptual phase. So when you see these images, the colors, they look a little bland because they're supposed to be right now. We haven't selected carpet. We haven't selected paint. We haven't changed any of that. Furniture hasn't been selected. So it's a little bit gray right now because that's not been done. So what we really want you to get an idea of is the general feeling of the space. I mentioned earlier that it's an airy, open space. We wanted to give you that wall to provide those quiet areas and active areas, but didn't want to really feel like we were blocking it off. So it's a large glass wall so that you can see straight through it, and you still have the views from one end of the library to the other. This view, I'll zoom in real quick right here. This is as if you've come in the front door. You've just come into this, the high-volume space, and you're looking towards that wall. That's that viewpoint. And again, the furniture is not selected. It's just here as an example. Now we've gone through the glass wall. We're back in the quiet area, and you're looking back out towards the active space of the library. So again, keeping that visual that goes from one side to the other and not interrupting that with a solid wall. And my last rendering here, this is of that string of meeting rooms that was along that lower wall in the plan. The idea here is not to provide something that is a giant block that would just block off the, the view down this corridor towards, back towards where the Friends of the Library workspace is. So there's some transparency. As we get into future phases, we can look at whether or not some kind of obscurement on the glass is necessary for privacy or so people don't walk into it or something along those lines. So this is one view of, of those meeting rooms. And I am going to pass it back to Jason to talk about the really fun stuff of cost and budgeting.
All right. We're going to, we're going to wrap it up, just a few more slides. I wanted to talk about costs. No project is successful without designing to a budget. Part of this validation effort is to determine initial conceptual cost estimating to then build a project, design a project to a budget. So as we all know, budgeting is a holistic effort. We have to look at hard costs, soft costs. We have to consider escalation, which is a factor of time. So all of these things go into our thinking when we're developing conceptual costing and estimating. So this slide is simply intended to communicate that and also remind us that there's a few fundamental parts of this at this stage. This is based on initial conceptual plans that you've seen. Therefore, we carry healthy contingencies in the costing because not everything has been designed yet. We know that throughout the design process, we have a lot of work left ahead of us. More outreach with friends, more discussions with staff. There, there's a lot of work ahead that will require some adjustment. So we have to allow for that adjustment. And so when you see the costs, those allowances have been made as well as the allowance for time and escalation. The other important component that I wanted to point out is that this is proposed right now as a single-phase effort. We, we recognize that we'll take careful coordination with Santa Clara County Library District and others to really consider if a single phase is the best solution. It may be better that it's phased in two or three steps. However, from a cost perspective, a single phase would result in the most cost-effective solution because time is money. So those are a couple of quick contextual pieces that I wanted to mention. There we go. Now it's clear. So I wanted to point out in this slide, there's two key components here. On the right, in the green box, you will see the bottom-line summary. There's a lot of detail behind this. However, this illustrates at a base hard-cost level the costs that we're anticipating. And as a reminder, Amy showed some fantastic renderings, great plan with these big moves. But all of the things that we talked about earlier, the backbone, the interior space of finishes, fixtures, and of course, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and maybe even arguably a very important component is electrification. We are pursuing that as a part of this project. And therefore, we wanted to isolate it separately from a cost endpoint to make that transparent. And knowing that going ahead, that's a, it's a primary goal and effort within this project is to do that. So the total hard costs, if you include the cost of electrification, which there are costs associated with that, sets at 8.8 million and change. You can see the split in the chart. I won't belabor the point there, but this gives you a rough breakdown of where that money is going. So I want to wrap up by again saying thank you. We're really excited about this. And I just think it's a tremendous opportunity for the community to consider a renovated and improved library. And so we are now looking out the windshield and saying, what's next? We're at the end of this phase, but there's a lot of work ahead. And we're looking forward to hearing from you and ultimately hopefully going to NCLA as a next step. So thank you very much.
All right. Don't go anywhere. We're going to have a couple of questions. All right. And the way this will work, my colleagues and I will ask a couple of clarification questions, and then the public will have an opportunity to comment, and then we will have our deliberation. So I'm going to start with a question. With regard to the main glass wall that's separating the stacks and the more open, noisy space, how much sound reflectivity are you accounting for? And what steps are you taking to mitigate the impact on the audio environment inside the library?
Yeah, great question, Mayor. Thank you. There's two components. You mentioned reflectivity. So to manage that, we will be adding acoustical wall treatment in the spaces that require to help the bounce-back or reflection of noise. In addition, I would just add that the, the glass construction itself will be such that it's an acoustical laminated glass system so that the transmission of noise is mitigated. So there's two aspects, is transmission, which we're trying obviously to prevent. But your point is very valid. When you do that, you create reflection. So how do we manage that? We'll be working with acoustical engineer as well in the next steps to make sure we're considering that in detail.
And I would assume that there are other library projects that you've been involved in that have utilized these techniques so that this is not experimental?
Yes, exactly.
And then my last question is, and I, I probably already know this, but just for the public's sake, what's the timeframe for completion on this library renovation?
So let me just go back maybe to that slide. If you can see here, this might help provide an overarching picture. There's a couple of things. One, this right now assumes that construction may start as soon as September of next year. So a year from now, let's say. That would mean that we could advance through the design documentation, permitting, and bidding to start construction about a year from now. Construction duration's going to vary depending on the contractor. We assume it's a design, bid, build, or hard bid delivery method. And so we would have to get a contractor on board, but we anticipate a duration of, you can see here, about 13 months. And that is for the sake of, again, escalation. We want to escalate to the midpoint of construction. So we've, we've kind of elongated construction a bit longer for a single phase to be conservative.
Thank you. All right. Colleagues, questions? Councilmember Meadows?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I'm very excited to see this. I, I did watch part of the Library Commission meeting. You gave them much more detail than us. So maybe you think we're simple-minded, but, but no, I'm, I know you don't. And I appreciate that you've really summarized it rather than going through some of the detail we saw in that last presentation. So two things, I'm very glad to hear you say that you included electrification. You've called it out specifically because we've had some public comments this week that made it seem like electrification wasn't even being considered. And I would have thought that that was a base case for any build and remodel that we do at City Properties. So, so I'm glad to hear that's included. Does that, do those initial estimates on the concept include solar panels? Or, and/or batteries? Is it, or is it just electrical equipment like HVAC, et cetera?
Yeah. Currently, we do not include any exterior improvements to the building. This is an interior renovation, so any foot-to-foot ticks that would be roof-mounted or ground-mounted array are not included in the costs. So all the costs that you are seeing relate to the electrical infrastructure. In addition to, for the electrification, we're talking about, you know, air-based heat pump units, site improvements for the infrastructure from PG&E to get the right capacity there for that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah.
That's helpful. And then I noticed, and then I know these are just concepts, and you haven't started the design, and I'm looking over this direction. This building is, and the renderings kind of show mid-century modern. And I'm hoping that we might be more modern, mid-century modern, or something, you know, not just kind of the same that we have right now. But, but you guys are the designers, so I just, you know, in those concepts, it's very still traditional. So as I said, modern, mid-century modern. That's probably a comment, not a question. So that's, that's just there to show stuff in the space. Is that correct? What we're looking at in those concepts?
Yes. So the concepts are intentionally neutral right now. We do want to convey that this, this library has a pretty strong history architecturally. We want to respect that. And so we will be looking at cues from that, but also looking at ways to introduce a little more playfulness. Color, especially with furniture, we can do that. So Amy is the master at that. But we get a chance to work together, and that's a big part of what we do.
Okay, thank you. And one final question. There was a question for the public benefit. It's in the Q and A. And it was about space proportionately is proposed for the Friends of the Library compared to other county facilities. So it's, it's really small print, so I couldn't really read it. But it looked like, and maybe you could help me if this is a true reading of that table, that we have average to above-average proportional amount of space dedicated to Friends of the Library. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. If you look at it as a square footage basis about space of the library overall, relative space dedicated to Friends, both workspace and sales space currently in the library and in the proposed design, we are achieving a higher level percentage-wise of space dedicated to Friends.
And if you looked at it as an absolute space, how does it? I mean, because it sounded like proportionately, some of the numbers were absolutely quite a bit higher than the proportion would dictate. So I don't know. The table doesn't necessarily have that. But what, how is the absolute space compare sort of versus the county-wide space dedicated to Friends of the Library?
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably not fully equipped to answer that question in regards to actual numbers. What I do know is that there are significant spaces. For example, at Saratoga, that is a much larger library. But if you look at it as an absolute, if you- an absolute, if you were to remove the relationship of square footage of the overall, I don't, I'd have to look at where Los Altos ranks as an absolute, but it's definitely not at the top of the list. I know there's more space at Saratoga, for example, for Friends, and I certainly would turn to staff and Santa Clara County Library District to help me answer that if that's helpful.
Okay. Thank you. That's the end of my questions, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll follow up with Councilmember Meadows, and let me start off by saying thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciated it. It was very simple. I appreciated the fact that you showed us where you started, the feedback that you received and input, and how you incorporated it in the current designs. I really appreciated your presentation, so thank you. With regards to the square footage for the Friends of the Library, my question more relates to what is the current square footage today and what will it be in this new design?
Yeah, great question. So what we tried to do is we've gone out and actually visited the library many times. We've had a chance to actually meet with the Friends in their space, and of course, they've been a huge part of our outreach. They've been very positively vocal. And so for us, when we have taken some measurements and looked at this, if you look at the current space, both combined for the workspace as well as the sales space, what we're proposing in the new updated conceptual idea here is a little bit less than what they have now, but it's very much similar because it's hard to equate. Currently, they have open space in the main library that they use for sales. That space is somewhat flexible depending on what they're doing seasonally, and I know that part of this for, we're going to continue to talk to the Friends quite a bit because we recognize that we want to be able to accommodate what they're able to provide for the library and for the community. So while the numbers are slightly less, I will give you some numbers. They're at about, my notes, I mean, let me pull up my notes so I don't mess this up. But we are at about, currently, they have about 780 square feet in workspace, another 200, 220 square feet in display, sales space, based on our understanding, and again, we'll validate that further. Currently in the proposed design, we're sitting at about 780 square feet, just a little bit less for the workspace. The workspace is largely the same. We've been able to reconfigure the space slightly to allow for better arrangement, if you will, to the existing architecture. And the sales space currently in the proposed design is 200 square feet as opposed to about 220 that we are seeing currently based on our rough understanding.
Thank you. Very helpful. And then with regards to the glass wall between the community marketplace and the quiet areas, I assume there's a door to connect both rooms. Is it a door that opens? Have we designed whether or not it's a pocket door? Have we gotten to that level of detail yet about what that door will look like and how it will open?
Yeah, great question. We have not gotten to that level of detail. Right now, we show two sets of double doors. However, we have had discussions and considered sliding door, which could be automatic potentially, right? There's lots of options. The costs right now allow for flexibility within the door opening types, so that's for a future step depending on more feedback.
And then still in that area with the community marketplace, and I like this whole idea of maybe, you know, down the road, we could have events, galas in that community marketplace, but I imagine if there are events taking place in the marketplace, we may still have kids and people studying in the quiet areas. Is there an exit from the quiet area to the outsides that they don't have to walk through the community marketplace in the event, there's an event going on and kids don't want to walk through the event?
Yeah, we can definitely look at that. Right now, there's not a, what I would say, defined exit because part of this is also controlling the flow of materials in now the library. Currently, there are theft detection RFID gates.
And let me clarify.
Yeah.
When I say exit, it would definitely take them to that checkout counter before they actually exit the library.
Right. Yes. So that's something we can show in future designs to illustrate that, but there should be the possibility to accommodate that. Yeah.
And then my last question has to do with the cost, that 8.8 million dollars. Is that only hard cost of that 70% of the total cost? So you're not showing the soft costs and the contingency that you had mentioned? That 8.8 is solely hard cost?
Yes. The short answer is yes. I'll clarify by saying the hard costs include contingency for design and estimating. The soft costs, we typically see soft costs ranging anywhere from 25% to 30% to 32%, depends on the project. And that's something that when we look at moving forward in next steps, working with the team to understand soft costs holistically, but our effort for Phase 1 was to define the hard costs of construction with appropriate contingency for those hard costs and escalation.
So just a point of clarification, is the ask of council tonight to recommend that this moves forward to NCLA to approve the budget request?
What we are here to do, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Gabe, or Jolie, et cetera, we are here to send this to NCLA for funding appropriation.
Thank you. And so is the funding appropriation then for the total cost or just for the 8.8 million dollars?
The funding appropriation tonight is just to continue on the design efforts. So it's not this number, this 8.8 million. It is the design number, which is actually already in the budget book for this next fiscal year. It'll be probably in the range of $900,000 to $1 million based upon the need to make the construction documents. So what your request is for appropriations is future design document creation.
Very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Kornasekka. That's it for me, Mayor.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo my colleagues. Thank you very much for the presentation. I thought that the written materials are very good, and the presentation that you just gave was very informative, and I think gave us and the community the right level of detail, so thank you for that. When this project is finally ready for construction, whether it's one phase or two phase, will construction require a closing of the library entirely? You know, and if not, what level of usability will there be? What should the community expect in terms of their ability to actually use the library?
Yeah. So if it is a single phase, the short answer is it would likely require closure of the library with the potential for temporary facilities to help serve in the interim. And that's something that we'd work with Steve and his team to make sure that we would consider what the best options are if there's a single phase. If there's a dual phase or beyond dual phase, there's potential to have part of the library still operational. That said, there are obviously pros and cons to that in terms of managing a construction process while allowing the public and the community to access portions of the library, but it is possible.
Well, you mentioned a temporary, you said temporary, and if it was facility or something like that, what would that look like? Like a portable where the library would operate out of?
Potentially, and again, I don't want to speak out of turn because we haven't yet gotten to that resolution of that question, but that's something that we have been talking to Santa Clara County Library District about is if there were the need, and the need was, we don't want to have an unmet need, and so there is a potential to look at a portable of a location to provide some level of service during construction. And that's not uncommon in a lot of our work that we do with libraries. That would go into your soft cost consideration because there's a cost associated with that.
Okay. Then hypothetically, if something substantially similar to what's being presented tonight was approved in one phase, how long would you estimate that would take?
So the, if we were to look at a single-phase construction, I would estimate it, again, I'm not the contractor, but I would estimate 12 months, about a year of construction, possibly less, but given the amount of infrastructure improvements, that's where I look at that 12-month mark as a reasonable assumption.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
The glass wall that's going to separate the noisier foyer from the quieter reading area, I'll ask the comments about that later, but one of the things that I'm concerned about is whenever someone goes in or out through those doors, there is going to be noise that goes through to the quiet area. Did you consider something like a double set of doors similar to say what we have here that would potentially mitigate that sound?
Great question. That's definitely something we could look at. The only downside, of course, is the space it takes to create that sound lock, I'll call it. And that's why I kind of, from a design perspective, like the idea of a sliding door that automatically will close quickly rather than somebody hanging the door open. So it's something we can consider for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Have you given any consideration to the forthcoming patio near the exit by the orchard? You've considered the flow of traffic and how users would go from the inside to the outside?
Yes, we have. We've actually been able to study those plans and talk to the design team specifically about the patio. One of the reasons we've organized the primary seating spaces near the north side overlooking the orchard is to engage visually with that patio. Additionally, we anticipate that we're going to have a lot more pedestrian flow from the north side, from the orchard side, and so that's why this extended marketplace or community hub we feel is very vital because it creates a thread of continuity now from the patio all the way to the current entrance, primary entrance at the parking lot side.
Good. I'm really glad to hear that. When this project first started, I recall that there was discussion about having the wall between the orchard room and the children's area maybe be movable or, you know, have like a slide, like an accordion-type door. Was any consideration given to that? Was that explored at all?
Yeah. In short, it was explored. Early on, we had discussions with the team about that idea because it was listed as one of the proposal ideas in the initial effort. Couple of reasons why that did not pan out in the final option. One, the children's area, as I know from discussions with the Santa Clara County Library District, they have been rolling out renovations of each of their children's areas. That effort had already commenced when we started, and we wanted to work with what they had developed and not reinvent what they had already come well along in their process. Structurally, there's also some limitations in that wall, so that was the second reason. And so we looked instead at creating a simple opening to get those family restrooms connected directly from the children's area.
Got it. Okay. Is there a wall dedicated to displaying art or any other area that's dedicated to art?
Short answer is yes. We have not specifically called that out on the plan at this stage. However, we know the importance of display space. We've heard that, and it would be a part of the design primarily in the more public spaces so it can really be appreciated in that marketplace.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Sure. Councilmember Lang?
So again, thank you for the good presentation. I also got to participate in the Library Commission meeting on August 7th, so I got the non-readers digest version of the little thing, and I appreciate it. I'd say a particular gratitude for how carefully you took the feedback from the community on issues like the restroom and so forth, and clearly responded well, and really felt like the process worked, so thank you for that. I guess my question would be about some of the Friends stuff. In some level, it's sort of this inventory management and, right, and it's sort of stuck in the corner of this quiet area. If you were starting from scratch, would you have put it there?
The short answer is no. But I think one of the key considerations is that we have to balance, we're working in a five-pound sack and we have 10 pounds of things that we want to put in it. And ideally, the Friends workspace and the sales space would be co-located, but we actually presented an option that did consider that, but it did require reduction in the workspace size to make it happen. And the trade-off, and again, hearing the input, is that we'd rather have as much space as possible and live with the discontinuity between, or co-location between, sales and workspace. So we looked at the plan again, and we said that current back corner that they currently are using seems like a viable space, and if we acoustically separate it from the rest of that zone, it could be quite successful. So that's what we're proposing in this plan. And again, to be honest, I know we're going to have more conversations with Friends moving forward, and I'm sure there's many here tonight that will want to speak to this as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I forgot to ask about whether or not we'll continue to have a passport counter as one of the cities that I know launched this passport counter pilot program a few years ago, which we're very proud of. I just want to find out if we'll be able to continue that program.
Yes, absolutely. The passport office is still intact. We have relocated it, and we're looking at integrating as part of the design a small waiting area just outside because we recognize that many times it's a family or a group of people that are in queue for their appointment, so that has been incorporated.
Public comment?
I have seven speaker cards.
We'll go one minute each.
The first speaker is David Kane, followed by Massimo Carli and Paola Zeni.
Well, good evening. The reason I'm here is I represent the electrification collaboration, and I'm here to follow up some comments that we made at the August 8th Commission. The Commission urged us to meet with you. Our ask is that the city include library electrification as part of the renovation project. You may have heard the excellent, or read the excellent TownCrier article last week about falling behind on the climate action and adaptation plan. The article cited a number of challenges we face in meeting cap goals, and one of the main challenges is that Los Altos is all built out. We can't meet our goals with new construction, nor we also can't meet our goals with regulations and mandates for that discussion. We can meet, however, our goals with voluntary renovations and electrification. We talk with our fellow residents about possibilities.
Thank you.
And likewise.
You can submit your comments in writing, but I can only give you the one minute. Thank you. May I ask the speaker a question?
Sure.
Go ahead.
We just heard in our presentation that electrification is a part of the project. What is it you are advocating for that is not already a part of the project?
We were delighted to hear that the Commission and the Council have included electrification, and we salute that. And so it's our great pleasure to be here and commend you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Massimo Carli, followed by Paola Zeni and Bob Mayo.
Hi. Good evening. I changed my comment after the presentation. I was here to advocate for the inclusion of specific goals about electrification. When I see this presentation, I think my key question is what does it mean electrification in view of the people making this design? While I would say there should be clarity about what that will include. For me, electrification would mean to have a heat pump, different kind of systems integrated, and not necessarily only rewired. So I think my ask to the Council is to explicitly make deliverable clear about the electrification component so that we can show that we are really aligning with the long-term goals of improvement in this area and bridge transparency and not ambiguity about what could have been done and has not been done. That's it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Paola Zeni, followed by Bob Mayo and Eric Steinle.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Paola Zeni. I've been a resident for 22 years. I am a avid user of the library, so very excited about the project, very excited to hear about the electrification. I want to echo that. We electrified our home completely, and for us, it means having solar panels, having heat pumps, and being really fully energy-independent. It makes great comfort, is very cost-effective, and it builds towards the environmental goals of the community. So I hope the library will take the opportunity to give the same value to the users of the library, and that's, we're going to have a complete, like Massimo said, a complete electrification. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Mayo, followed by Eric Steinle and Janet Ramosak Levine.
Hi. Thank you. Well, I'm pleased to learn that electrification has more support than I originally assumed, so I have two comments that I'd like to make. This represents a point where we move from conceptual design to technical design, and that's where the systems that we choose, like heating and cooling, are defined, and those create, that will affect everyone who uses the building. that will affect everyone who uses the building. So I urge you to specifically set goals for this technical phase that include making the library healthy, comfortable and climate-friendly and all-electric. Because if those goals are set for this phase, just like other goals were set for the prior phase, it will help clarify the architect's task. The second point I'd like to make is that I heard a lot of talk that electrification would necessarily be very expensive. I didn't believe that was true necessarily. I didn't have the luxury of talking to our architect. You can, of course. So I talked to several commercial HVAC consultants and also staff at Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And they explained-
I'm afraid I'm going to have to cut you off because you're out of time, but please feel free to send those comments to us.
Okay, you have them.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Eric Steinle, followed by Janet Ramosak Levine and ending with Duncan McMillan.
When I saw this project, hello all, the only person who hasn't been on the library is Jonathan. I don't know how you managed to avoid this. But anyway, everybody else in the council has done. Conflict of interest? Oh, okay. All right. That's cheap excuse, but we'll take it. Anyway. When I saw this, the first thing I thought of was the Agora. I'm a planning commissioner, but I'm speaking, actually not speaking as a planning commissioner, but as a former library commissioner, having been involved in this since-
I think you're speaking for yourself regardless of what commissions you've served on.
But my comments are based on my experience in the Library Commission. And that this is really an exciting project. I'm glad to see this because we have been working towards this for a long time. The library staff, of course, has been spectacular. The Library Commission has done great work. And I think that the most exciting thing about this whole project is the public space that is now created, the Agora, which originally would be you, but turns out is the public space. So I think that's a great part of this and I'm excited to see what the next phase will be.
Thank you, Mr. Steinle.
The next speaker is Janet Ramosak Levine, followed by Duncan McMillan.
Hi, I'm Janet. I'm Vice President of Friends of the Library and I'm speaking on behalf of our board. First of all, I just want to say that we endorse moving forward with the plan, asking NCLA for the funds. We are very grateful for being included in this plan with permanent, offers of permanent space, both for work and for sales. And, but we would respectfully make two comments and requests that the city provide guidance to the architects on a couple of issues. The major one for the Friends is the location of the sales space in the lobby. I have spoken to Rose, the librarian, and I was going to ask if we could have the opportunity with the architects to work with Rose and see if we can find some possibility where we're integrated in the library like we are now. And if, and find a way that we can provide a clear distinction between sales space and our, and the library collections. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the last speaker is Duncan McMillan.
Yeah, Duncan McMillan, I've got 30 years in on the Friends and this may be the last one because of this design. This is not news to the architect. Everybody in the Friends who has spoken to them have said this is patently unacceptable. You cannot put the sales space in the lobby in a fishbowl. Now, I'll give them a little conciliatory thing. Since it doesn't hold water, we'll call it a terrarium. Okay? That thing is going to kill the lobby. A lot of people use the lobby. It's going to take up, it's going to make it harder to get into the bathrooms. It's taking our, and here's an example of loose terms and loose numbers. We have 264 square feet of sales space, counting the walkarounds and so on. Your Friends in Saratoga have 1,600 square feet of sales space. They use Cupertino, yeah, Cupertino. They have put on their display racks 150 books. We sold 600 last week. It's just no comparison and they fudged the numbers and that's why we're coming up with less work and we will not survive.
Thank you. Okay, I will bring it back to council for deliberation. Does anybody want to kick us off with their remarks or comments? Councilmember-
Maybe Councilmember Weinberg.
Oh, yeah. Are you? Yeah, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much to the members of the public. I think it'd be great to get some clarification on what electrification means and it doesn't necessarily have to be tonight. But the idea of saying this is what we're doing and to have measurables, you know, what's going in, when is it going in? What are we trying to accomplish with this? I think it's a great idea. I know that we're going to be hiring a cap administrator or something. So maybe that's someone who can work with the architect to sort of put together a way of presenting that to the community. I'm very much a proponent of this moving forward. I'm excited to see where it is. And I have a deep respect for the process that has been followed. A lot of input has been taken. I can clearly see that that input has been synthesized by the architect, by the consultants, which doesn't happen on every project, but it clearly has happened here. I went to one of the two open houses that was actually at the library earlier this summer. I thought it was very well-run. The diagrams are very clear. The posts that's going up, I thought were useful. So I appreciate the process. There's a lot of nitpicking that I can do, but I'm not going to. I don't think that it serves the process for the five of us up here to just come in now and say, I don't like that corner. What about this little nook or cranny? Overall, I think the process has really done the community and the city a great service. So thank you very much for that. My biggest concern is the glass wall separating the quiet area from the main center of the library. I like the idea of being able to see from one or the other. I like the idea of having a structure that separates the noisy area from the quiet area. I think that the mayor brought up some very important concerns that we need to be careful about. Not only do we want to keep the loud out of the quiet area, but we don't want the loud to bounce off the wall and then echo and become more loud. If there is a failure point for this process, I feel like that would be it. So I really hope that a lot of care and thought and modeling and engineering, whatever needs to be done, really is done. Because it would be a shame to go through the process, have our beautiful new library and find out that the wall is not performing the way we want it to or even worse, is making things worse. And it's happened in other places. There's a concert hall in San Francisco when they, when they built it, they found out that the acoustics were terrible and they had to do a lot of things to remediate that. We want to avoid that here, not just for the cost and the time, but, well, yeah, because of the cost and the time. It, you know, I'll wait to hear what my colleagues say, but it strikes me that there's enthusiasm for moving forward with this. So assuming that that's where the council goes, I would look to staff and say, we should perhaps start thinking about whether we're going to have a temporary facility. If we're going to do it, what will it look like? I think it's not really something that we want to do, you know, the day before construction starts. And frankly, I think we also ought to let our library patrons know that this is in the works. And it's not, construction isn't starting tomorrow. But once we've gone through the process, there's a chance that the whole library could be closed for 12 to 18 months in order to accomplish, you know, here, here's what you're getting, here's why we're doing it. But now is the time to start letting our patrons know that the not-so-good part of it is going to become, it's in the foreseeable future. Like my colleagues up here, who already expressed it, I hate the generic look of the fixtures and the furniture. I really appreciate the statement that this is just a space filler for now. Hopefully we'll have something really cool. I have a lot of faith in your ability to deliver something for our community that we're really going to like. I like the idea of color. Of course, we want to honor the architectural blessing that we have in that building, but giving it modern touches and making it an attractive place that people want to be. The one nitpick that I will make is the fishbowl-ness of the meeting rooms. My office recently constructed a couple of conference rooms and they were fishbowl-style. And it didn't take long for us to decide that we need to put film at eye level to give a little bit of privacy. You could still see whether or not a room was being occupied. But the fishbowl-ness, it's very, it's unpleasant to be in there when you know that so many people are looking at you. And frankly, it can be a little awkward to be in a quiet study area and see, you know, gestures going on, meetings happening. If there's one area that I would poke into, it would be that. I think having some kind of opaqueness at eye level would be appropriate. Otherwise, thank you very much.
I would just add to your remarks, Councilmember, and say, we ought to start putting posters up in the library that say, we're going to electrify, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and here's all the great things you can get. And bear with us through the growing pains, but, you know, we ought to be bragging about this because this is a beautiful project and really exciting. So, Councilmember Lang, you have some thoughts?
So I actually worked for an acoustical engineer one summer and that glass wall is pretty scary. I'm not an acoustical engineer anymore, but be sure to talk to them because that's challenging. I'm very glad that you're respectful of the historic aspect of the building. I think it's actually pretty interesting how that building and the Notre House are actually kind of in conversation a little bit. They're decades apart, but you can see sort of a theme of California architecture that runs through that. And it's a pretty cool thing that's going on with that. I want to really give a shout out to everybody involved, the staff, the Friends, everybody who's been giving their input. But I particularly want to give a shout out to the Library Commission. I mean, I know we love all our commissions the best. But Chairman Bedard and the people in that commission, I think, really did what we want commissions to do, which is to take the process through, help the public have their input. I think the project has really improved because of that. And so I really want to salute the work that that commission did of taking the delegation from us very seriously and doing a great job. Love the electrification. You know, we haven't talked about this, obviously, but my sense is that this council is going to be very supportive of moving forward with that. I don't just want to do it. I actually think, an interesting thing, like usually what often happens with utilities in these buildings is you hide them. You put them behind stuff. I think there's actually an opportunity here to make it an educational thing. Now, I got to say here, I was recently at a beach house that had a heat pump, water heater, and I went down in the basement and watched it for a while because there were all these people showering. So maybe my sense of what's entertaining is not generally true. Nevertheless, I think that there are enough people in our community interested in this stuff that using it as an opportunity to show that this is how it works. Could be not just that we're doing it because we should do it, but also libraries are a place to educate people. We could use this as an opportunity to educate people about here's what electrification actually looks like, how that's done. I don't know. You can figure that out. And just to echo the very good thing, which is, we need to start planning for the temporary aspect. Like clearly, clearly it's not going to be like, take all the books out you can because it's going to be 18 months until you can visit the library. And so some sort of plan, and for us, that's probably going to mean some sort of budget. So.
Okay, now I would look for a motion. Oh, Vice Mayor?
We deferred to that end, so now we have probably a few comments. Did you want to go first, Vice Mayor?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I'm happy, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Meadows. So of course I echo, thank you again and thanks for the public comments. And first of all, yes, I do want to thank the Library Commission. I've seen their work firsthand and up close. And so I know how dedicated they are to the library and to the improvements in the library. So I echo Councilmember Lang's thanks. With regards to the electrification, yes, I think, you know, this council is very supportive of those efforts. And you have an estimated cost of what electrification would look like. So I imagine you've already started identifying what the electrification work would look like if you have that estimated cost. So I would appreciate, as my colleagues have requested, better understanding that. So they're actually meeting our goals. And there are things that we want to see incorporated into this new and improved library. With regards to incorporating it into the library, whether it's having the heat pump accessible to patrons to go and view or even just having a wall or a section just talking about, you know, what we've done with the building and the electrification efforts that have gone into the building, I echo the sentiment of making it a teaching moment for our community because it's such a priority for us. With regards to the glass wall, again, we don't want to design from the dais. But if there's a way, just based on, you know, the concern of a door opening and the noise moving from the community marketplace to the quiet area, maybe one option, and it ties in with my question earlier about having an exit from the quiet area to the checkout counter, maybe not having any doors for that wall, glass wall, and have a different door that connects the community marketplace through the checkout counter. Just an idea to avoid having a door open between those two rooms. With regards to the temporary location, yes, I know how this works. You know, Campbell and other cities have done this. So I know this, our staff will have to work with the Santa Clara County Library District to figure out the phased approach and where we relocate and what that looks like. So I echo the request to start thinking about this. I know we're in design phase and we're going to move to design 2.0. But hopefully sooner rather than later, we will move to the construction phase. And so it would be great for our staff to start really talking. And I'm sure Rose and others with Santa Clara County have already identified potential locations for these different phases. I have no doubt they have. But I definitely encourage those communications to start soon, if they haven't already, so that we can also in the city start communicating the store residents, not only that they're informed, but they get excited, right? When they start seeing the pictures, because that's what we really want to have happen. The fishbowl idea, I defer to Councilmember Weinberg, but I respect his opinion so much. I was indifferent about the fishbowl. But, you know, if there's a concern about people not being comfortable in these rooms, if there's some opaqueness we could add, tinting to the glass, whatever that looks like, I would be supportive of that as well. And then the last thing I would add, you know, and I appreciated ABA saying at the beginning that they're continuing to talk to Friends of the Library. I completely appreciate the comment that with the sales area, the display sales area being in that front area, it will get crowded. We're all very familiar with that location. And so I don't know if with this redesign, if there's really another place to put the Friends of the Library sale location, but if there is, for me, I would encourage continuing to talk with Friends of the Library. They're an important stakeholder and partner for the city and the community. And we want to make sure that not only they're comfortable, but they have a usable space that works for them. And so I know we have limited space to work with, but I would definitely encourage you to continue talking with them to see if there's another location. Maybe there has to be a trade-off, maybe a little less space for them to get the ideal location. I don't know what that looks like. But I definitely would want them to be part of that conversation as we move forward with the design 2.0. But to Councilmember Weinberg's point, 100%, I support with all this input from council, moving forward with the requested recommendation to the NCLA board and look forward to the updates from ABA and the team. Again, very impressed with the presentation. So thank you so much.
Okay, I'll start out with the easier comment, which is, yes, I support forwarding the funding request to NCLA. And I think they'll be delighted to get that. It's yet another step in forward progress. So I'm going to say I'm a little neutral on the fishbowls. Yeah, in, and I'm going to say, speaking of comfort levels, I've sat in a very small pod with Chair Bedard. Nothing untoward happened, but, you know, if I could do that, I'm not sure I'm concerned about the fishbowl in the much larger, even the small meeting rooms. So, and that's no slight on Chair Bedard. In fact, I want to next go to say not only thanks to the commission, but thanks to the ad hoc task force, Pierre, and our former resident who we miss and will invite to the grand opening, former Chair Julie Crane. So between the two of them, they really shepherded this program and that's a significant part of why we're here today. I do want to say, I was really relieved to hear, because we've been hearing, I don't know if you want to call it an old wives' tale or what, for years, that the building itself was an issue. And what I heard you say is that the structure is sound and that you can put in modern facilities, electric, HVAC, whatever, and the structure is good and will sustain us for a long time. Because we've been tripping over that for at least the five years, maybe more like 10 years with that myth. So I think that should be a prominent talking point is, this is a good, solid structure we have to work with. I think it's very important. We're also the only, so there's really not, let me back up. There's not a good comparison between the space in the Saratoga Library and the space in our main library just around the corner. the corner. They're at 48,500 square feet, and we're at 28,000 square feet. We do have one advantage, though, versus all the other libraries in the county, which is we have two libraries. We have the Wooden Library, not very big, but likely to have a new patio. So we probably, and I'll leave, we'll all leave it to the county to figure out, we have some ability to work around closure, total or phased, I think, because we have the advantage of that second building. I want to say that I too fully support electrification. We might be able to get some help with SVCE, some programs, though all those programs are very impacted these days, but still. And I did want to suggest that if we're talking about all the interior aspects of electrification, and I don't know that this would go, we still could request an ad alternate for panels on the roof, and whether NCLA agreed to fund that or whether council considered that as a budget issue, I would like for that ad alternate to be considered. So we're not just looking at HVAC, et cetera, we're also looking at powers. And with that, I think those are my comments. It's very exciting, and thanks again to all who've worked so hard to make this happen.
So, Councilmember Meadows, why don't we, why don't we have staff look into the panel issue and whether or not that would be something we want to bring back on our own agenda as something to fund? Okay? So our guidance to staff on that is to come back to us, and we can look at that as a future agenda item, if it's necessary, or maybe it's something that NCLA can fund. Are there other comments that colleagues would like to make before we call the question on forwarding the funding request to NCLA? Okay?
We're chatting business.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, what did you ask us, Mayor?
I said, do you have any more comments before we consider the funding request?
We were clarifying that the two members of this council that sit on NCLA are yourself and Councilmember Lang, and then there are three other members, two from Los Altos Hills, and there's the Chair over there again.
Shaking his head.
Of NCLA. So that's the North County Library Authority across both our cities.
Yeah, and for the residents here who don't understand what that body does, because there's a lot of jargon going on here, that is the body that oversees the tax dollars that are raised by parcel taxes expressly to fund services in the library. All right, so now I would look for a motion to forward this funding request to NCLA. Councilmember Weinberg?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Clerk?
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're going to go ahead and move to item number 10, adoption of a resolution considering the use of public art funds for the $70,000 worth of art in the Dog Park Plan. Do we have a staff report on?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We're going to, I'm going to go ahead and prepare this. We have a calendar and associates representative here, so he's going to come up to the table and sit with us for now. Yes.
City Council, my name is Manny Hernandez. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Los Altos, and with me I have our calendar and associates, which is our architect for this project, as well as our project manager, Capital Improvement Projects Manager, Scott. Great, Scott, sorry. Anyhow, City Council, the item before you for action tonight is a request for additional $70,000 for the Public Art Fund to cover the cost, the elevated cost of art components to be added to the Dog Park project. This is also the opportunity for council to see the 95% plans, which was, which a presentation was added to the council packet. In preparing the design with the architect, calendar, and associates, staff has identified an opportunity to include art aspects in the fencing, shade structure, and entry designs as part of the Dog Park project. The inclusion of art components in these areas is more costly than the standard fencing and other components that I mentioned. This increased cost would not fit within the current project budget. Staff has taken this recommendation to the Parks and Arts and Recreation and Culture Commission, and they unanimously recommended the allocation of this funding for art in the Dog Park project. So we have Brian Fletcher with Calendar and Associates in attendance, and he will take, talk a little bit about what we could possibly install for those components, and I'm going to go ahead and put something on the screen right now so you can see that as he speaks. Yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you tonight and speak about the art components that I think will be some very nice enhancements to the Dog Park itself. They're perfect, wonderful. So as part of the master plan, there was a shade structure as part of the component there. So as we've looked at developing the design of this, we are proposing a simple prefabricated structure. However, we're looking to customize that structure with laser-cut panels that you can see up top. This has proven to be a real cost-effective way of providing an architectural enhancement to a number of our projects and provide some creative punch, but at the same time, well-needed shade in around the kind of pedestrian area. Next slide. So the next area that I do want to talk about is kind of some fencing enhancements as well as the entry sign itself. So at the park entry gates and for the park entry sign, we're proposing silhouettes of dogs. They provide some whimsy, I think you can see that, as well as they also reflect the size of the dogs that each space will accommodate. Next slide. And then finally, the last piece that I wanted to talk about is the enhancement of the fencing and the landscape adjacent to the library. We wanted to be sensitive to the view of the Dog Park from the library at this one location. There, we are proposing to use a combination of shrubs as well as additional laser-cut panels to soften that edge, as well as to reduce the transparency of the fencing in that location. So this provides aesthetics and a softening of that edge. So with that, that completes the enhancements that we're talking about tonight.
Questions from colleagues? Councilmember Meadows?
Thank you very much, and thank you for the commission in entertaining and proposing enhancements for the park. I did just have the one question about the shade structure, and I hear and I saw the answers in the Q and A, that it's not that exact pattern you're proposing, though it sounded like what you said tonight, that that may be the pattern you're proposing. I would just ask to be sure you've, and maybe you've done this before, but you have due diligence regarding sensitivity to pattern, cut patterns like that, that do to people visually if you're sitting under that, as the light moves, and I'm probably sensitive to it, because I am sensitive to that. So, you know, whether it's headache or epilepsy or whatever. So you know more about it than I do, I'm just bringing it up publicly to say I hope that you feel confident that that won't trigger some visual migraine or epilepsy or whatever.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. My question relates to the same, and thanks for the presentation on the shade structure. The $70,000 that's being requested from the Public Arts Fund, would a portion of that amount go towards the entire shade structure or just the design at the top of the structure? So when we talk about the art piece, is it the entire structure or just the panels at the top with the current floral design?
It would, and Brian can chime in if I'm saying this incorrectly, but it would go to the increased costs of those three components that we're talking about. So there is a higher cost for the art component of it. So technically, yes, I would believe that that would be applied to the actual shade structure, or shade component itself, what we're talking about, the artistic component, because that's going to cost more. So it would go towards that.
So if we decided not to do the floral design on the panels, would the funds still be coming from the Public Arts Fund?
The request is for the $70,000 for those three components. If council chooses not to allocate that money, then we would just go with regular components such as fencing, as regular signage, or no signage with designs and no artistic shade structure.
But we would still have a shade structure?
Yes, you would still have a shade structure.
Just an artistic shade structure.
Yes, the artistic charge is what we're looking for.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Meadows?
I didn't phrase my question as a question, but I was asking a question about, are you proposing that exact artistic, because there's lots of artistic designs that wouldn't necessarily create a problem, like I was describing. Are you proposing what you're showing us? You're just using that as an example of an artistic shade structure?
That is an example, as we're putting forward. However, it is one of the options that we're looking at.
Right, okay. Great, thank you.
There's a plasma cutter out there set to make a ton of money on this design. All I can say is we're obsessed with plasma cutting. Public comments?
I have one card from earlier that was specific to the funding.
Okay, three minutes.
Janine Valades.
Hello, same disclosures as before. I'm a member of Park, but I'm speaking as a member of the public today. So on the question before the council to approve the allocation of the public art monies to the addition of the select art features, I support these features, all of them, because they do provide the whimsy, they also provide beauty, so they're not silly, and they also have this duality with the function that is not only useful, but it is necessary. Kickplates on any entry gates to a dog park are critical, or you end up misshaping the... They also provide a little bit of blocking. Blocking is very important in a dog park, fencing, gates, everything, because the visual stop allows you to keep the attention of your dog and calm them down before you enter or exit. So I'm very much about that. Now, the laser cutting on the fencing, while I like that it softens the look, you don't just want a dark panel, I hope that the landscaping does, in fact, block that well for both reactivity in dogs, but also reactivity in kids outside and inside the park. In terms of the artistic element of the shade structure, I completely understand the light sensitivities. I know, have a lot of friends that have those light sensitivities. I do love arting up anything. I would question whether the, creating such, whether it's mechanical or laser-cut, artistic or just slats. The one factor we have in, when we did, I'm going to speak a little bit as a member of Park, when we did the Dog Park Study on the use of the pilots, the use of the parks plummeted because of rain, primarily because the places turned to mud, but also because the humans didn't want to be out in the rain. So having a shade structure that is, you know, either temporarily or permanently oblivious to rain, I think would be a better thing for humans. The cost, I don't know how the cost would be impacted, so I cannot comment on that. I may be asking for more money, I may be asking for less. I will say, so in general, I endorse with the one consideration about rain. What I would like to also add, though, is that the most important training tool inside a dog park is a place to teach your dog stay. So the stones that are planned are great, they do that. So the number one priority is taken care of. The number two priority is to have what's called the Dog Walk Bridge. It's basically a ramp, a flat part, and a down ramp. And the reason that's so important is because it teaches your dog to focus. Yet they're on leash, you teach them how to focus, to trust you, and work their mind. And all the agility features were removed. I would ask that one thing be returned, and I'd be interested in a public-private funding opportunity for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the dais for our deliberation, and I'll kick it off by saying, you know, both the Public Art Fund and the Park and Lou Fund are funds that are contributed to by developers when they build new developments in the city. They are not taxpayer dollars, per se, although all dollars are fungible in a sense. We have some upcoming needs for our Park and Lou Fund. We have other park expansion projects, and for the most part, we're obligated to spend Park and Lou funds proximate to the developments themselves that are funding the park, these parks. It is true that amenities that serve the entire community, like a dog park, are certainly justifiable with Park and Lou funds from a development that may come from South Los Altos, for example, because the Dog Park will serve the entire community. But we're going to have to spend some of those Park and Lou funds downtown where most of the development is occurring. And so I'm hopeful that this is, in a small way, a method where we can lighten the burden on the Park and Lou funds, and fundamentally, the art fund is specifically for this type of thing. We've used it in the past to put in artistic bike racks, for example. So we have taken the opportunity in the past to look at functional requirements around the city and say, okay, how can we make these both functional and artistic? Now, I would say with the bike racks, we probably fell short on the functionality of them, but we did fine on the artistic portion. So that's where I am in this. I support using the art funds to pay for the art. Next?
I support it as well. I think it's important, it helps make it a dog park and not look like a dog prison yard, which is sometimes the aesthetic that you end up with. So I'm very supportive of that. I do think that the comment about rain is very well-taken, in particular, that it would be, maybe not pouring down rain, but there are those days where there's a bit of drizzle or whatever, and the dog doesn't mind, and...
And you don't take your dog to the park.
Well, different people have different opinions about what they do with their dogs.
I go there...
We don't have interaction between the audience and the dais.
Okay, so I do think that that's a good idea, but more generally, I support the motion, the activity.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to vote in favor of the motion. If we didn't have a decorative shade structure, I wouldn't cry over that. I think that the comments about inclement weather, whether it's rain or heat or anything else, I think that the comment is well-stated. I'm really disappointed that the agility section was taken out, and there's very little seating for humans. I thought that some of the P and L money was going to be used for benches that were also kind of decorative and artsy and dog-themed, and we were shown some photos of what some of that would look like. I, you know, I'm sure it's not a one-for-one trade, but I would easily give up the design and the shade structure to get a little bit more seating that's more whimsical. I think that would be a better use of the money.
That's great, you know, as long as the benches are whimsical and artistic, the discussion of them is in order. The agility portion of the Dog Park, unless it's whimsical and artistic, is not.
I definitely support the resolution, and I'm happy to make a motion if you would like, Mayor. like, Mayor.
Please.
Okay. So I move the city council adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Los Altos, to authorize the use of public art funds in the amount of $70,000. Isn't it not to exceed $70,000? So I think that needs to be corrected in the resolution, an amount not to exceed $70,000 to purchase fencing and shade structure art components as part of the Hillview Dog Park project.
Second?
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flagler?
Yes.
Mayor Daley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Did I leave out some SEQA stuff? Is that what the city attorney is saying?
No. We're just... As amended.
Okay. Oh, as amended. Okay. Yep. Not to exceed.
Okay. So the next items on the agenda are informational items. We are not discussing these or taking action, but the information has been included in the packets. We'll go to council and staff reports and directions on future agenda items. I'm going to kick us off with a future agenda item that one of our wonderful residents brought to our attention today, which is that the city of Los Altos really should have a shuttle service. And as a matter of fact, the city of Mountain View has a shuttle service that they pay for. And it also comes to pass that the Foothill-Danza College District is entertaining the idea of putting together a shuttle service. And it's quite possible that we can participate in this transit opportunity in a meaningful way that would connect Caltrain to our downtown and our downtown to Foothill College and Deanza Community College. And so I would like to suggest that we have an information session to start to surface some of these possibilities.
Yes, please.
Okay. Yep. Yep. We got three on that. All right. And I would also like to report that in addition to seeing the scouts here tonight, you know, earning their merit badge for civic participation, I was fortunate enough to go to an eagle ceremony last weekend and see several young scouts achieve the rank of eagle, which, for those of you who don't know, is a really, really special thing. And it's just a joy to see. And several of the scouts still refer to me as Coach Pete, and I knew them when they were literally five, when they were playing T-ball. So it's just great to see what organizations like the scouts and so forth contribute to our community and the way they help really build citizens of our society. So I'm happy to report on that.
So Mayor, I would like to, I think most of us are familiar with this, but I'm going to mention it, and in case the audience is also interested, the senior commission is hosting and putting on a Live Well, Age Well Health Expo at our community center on Tuesday, September 9th. And interestingly, oh, and 12 to 3:00 p.m., and I think the vice mayor will be speaking at that, or everyone said that you weren't available, Mayor, but if you change your mind. Anyway, I'll pass this down so you all can see. It's, September 9th is also a council meeting evening, so it's a little tight in terms of timing. But I do encourage anyone who might be interested in a...
Yeah, I am. I am. Give me a minute.
Yeah, that's what they said. So the vice mayor will be speaking. I will also be there to help. And the senior commission, this is one of their work plan goals. I want to report that National Night Out, August 5th, I came to the community center, and I made the mistake of going home with my hot dog, and I never got out to any of the, to any of the block parties. But I did attend a block party last weekend. I think Councilmember Lang and I were both there at the Casita Block Party. I had office hours, there was, and I also attended Club 55 on August 15th, which is kind of like office hours as well. So it's supposed to be social, but for us, it's not necessarily. So that is my report.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I also went to the event at the community center, and I tried to go to a couple of the block parties, but they had actually closed early. So I drove by, and they were closing up the garage and another one, everyone had obviously left. But the event at the community center, I think it was great, it was well attended when I was there, and I'm sure that's why the other block parties were not as vibrant as sometimes they have been in the past. Let's see. I've been in contact with an AI startup about services that perhaps could be presented to the city, and I don't know if anything is really going to come from that. This really is a ground floor startup. They were supposed to get back to me with some information. I'm still hopeful that they will, but if something comes from that, I will let the council know kind of what is out there and what some of the ideas are, and see if it's something we want to pursue. I've also reached out to, been playing phone tag with a couple of companies that specialize in using AI for plan checking, to get more information about that, to see if that's something else that the council wants to entertain. I'm sure most of us have been following the news. We know that the National Guard has now been used to police Washington, D.C. I have reached out to Flock to get more information about the security of our data. There's talk of perhaps the National Guard going to Chicago, and I've also heard rumblings about the National Guard being sent to Los Angeles and Oakland. Oakland in particular makes me nervous with respect to our Flock data, because that's one of our neighbors, and they would be able to have some of the limited access to our data that we allow. I haven't sent these concerns to public safety, because I've done that once or twice already, and I don't want to be a nudnik about it, but it is something that I keep my eye on, and I hope my colleagues will as well. Because if the National Guard is used in California, especially in the Bay Area, I think that it's pertinent to see how that would affect our use of the Flock cameras and datas in accordance with the policy that we have in place. Something else, I think most of us are aware that the county has approved, what was it, a 5-6 cent sales tax? I am our regional rep for the VTA Board, and I won't belabor the details of it, but the VTA has essentially decided to join a new special district that is likely to have a half-cent sales tax on the ballot, probably in November of next year. And I'm bringing this up because 5-6 sales tax to the county, half-cent sales tax to VTA, we are trying to raise money for our own needs, and we've been talking about a sales tax. I just think this is something that we ought to keep in mind and start thinking about, because we're going to be, when we decided to move forward with that idea, there was 1.4 cents less prospective sales tax increase that was being proposed. So the situation has changed a little bit. I've talked to staff about it. Let's see, what else?
Councilmember Weinberg, real quickly, the proposed sales tax increases are going to put us at the statutory limit. So really, what you're saying is they're going to block us out of considering that for funding, right?
I don't think that's true. I think that the way that, at least the legislation with respect to the special district that the VTA is a part of, I think it's going to be separate and exempt from that. I don't think it's going to counter that. However, the reality is, and I'm sure that members of the public who oppose a tax will let us know, the reality is, I think that it would put, assuming that we passed our own and the other two passed, I think Los Altos would be at, or perhaps the very highest sales tax in the county. So again, it's something that we should simply be aware of. All right. Let's see, I remember if it was last week or the week before, but I invited the CEO of the VTA to come to Homestead Avenue and take a look at the proposed Homestead project. She brought her chief of staff and a couple of other members, employees of the VTA, engineers who are working on the project. Transportation manager Stephen Sun and traffic engineer Art Williams came from the city. We walked the area. I'm doing everything that I can to try to get that project pushed forward. It's not easy to do, and that's not because it's not a meritorious project, but it's because there's a lot of other meritorious projects within the county as well. But I'm trying to push that through. It would not surprise me if sometime within the next, hopefully less than that, but realistically, six to 12 months, the VTA will be requesting maybe a letter from the mayor, or joint letter from the three mayors who are involved in cities around that project, perhaps to our representative of Congress to look for money. We're about $16 million short of funding it where it should be. So there may also be requests for money from the city. There actually has already been requests to the city for money, but the project isn't far enough along that I think it was just a fireball for us to put money into it. But that, I'm trying to move that along. I'm poking where I can, again, without being too much of a nudnik, but I just want to keep everyone's eyes open that that's something where there may be some asks of the council.
I did talk to Congressman Licardo about that as well.
Fantastic.
Personally, and asked him for the money, so.
You know, maybe a good idea, he's a cyclist. If we were to cycle that, Carolyn Gudde, the CEO of the VTA, she saw as, it was the afternoon, so she didn't see rush hour, but she did see some of the high schoolers biking up and down that, along with the recreational users. So I think it really, it opened her eyes, and she described the Homestead-Foothill-grant intersection as spaghetti, which is a technical term that I think we can all kind of understand what it means. But it was good to hear her say that, not if someone pointed out to her. So that's positive. I would like to propose two future agenda items. One of them is to take another look at the surface that we're using at the Hillview Dog Park. I'm not asking that artificial, we need to make a policy regarding artificial turf throughout the city. I think that since we had our meeting in July of last year, there's new information, and it would be appropriate for us to take a look at that one issue just with respect to the dog park.
And I'll second that. I actually had that on my list as well. And just to add to that, Councilmember Weinberg, I'm thinking, just still look at the other options, and so for us to fully appreciate the pros and cons, cost timeline, what it would really mean if we looked at other alternatives, DG, natural grass. I do think we owe the community to have that analysis. Again, I would support having that come back.
Hmm. Need three if we're going to ask staff to do work, or I could just do a discussion.
This is a strange kettle of fish, ain't it? Right? I was asked about the dog park when I was campaigning, and I said, I don't believe in revisiting the decisions the council makes. And so it's puzzling to me to find that two of the four people on the council who voted for that seems to be changing their mind.
Let me correct you on one thing there. There was a three-to-two vote to move forward with that dog park, and there's only one member still on the council today who actually voted in favor of it, and that would be me. So the other two members of the council who voted in favor of it are no longer here. I first started working with the city on park, and having dedicated dog parks was one thing that I've been trying to do for more than the last, I want this dog park to exist. I want it to succeed. I dare say more than anyone else in this room. But I think that it is appropriate, given information that I have learned since July of last year, to relook at the issue.
And I second that. I think it's a responsible thing, at least for me as a council member, to do where you learn new information, to be open to the idea of changing your mind if you're presented with additional information that you want to reconsider. I don't want to be locked in, especially if it was a bad decision at the time. If there are only two of us, Jonathan, as you know, we could just have a discussion, you and I, if we don't get a third vote. But I definitely think it's worth reconsidering if there are other options and what that could mean.
Mayor?
One second. Before we finish the discussion of this potential item, I would like to clarify for my colleagues what this will mean. So because of state law, one of the components of state law being that you cannot have the same firm design and build the dog park, or, you know, particular public projects like that. Go ahead, city attorney.
I think we should probably not discuss the contract issues at this point.
Okay. Fair enough. Suffice it to say that this issue is far more complicated than simply reconsidering a surface element of the design. And we're probably looking at, you know, like another year before we get to start the dog park.
That is contrary to the information that I was given by staff.
So at this point, council really can't discuss the topic without it being on the agenda. So I think if Councilmember Lang supports it or not, he would need to let us know.
I'm going to go ahead and support this. If two out of the four people who are part of this want to revisit it, I'm going to support the revisiting it.
I have a comment, Mayor, if I may.
Please.
So this discussion we're having here reminds me of when I was on planning commission, and I was sitting back there, and I attended the council meeting when there was a contention, including some council members who tried and nearly succeeded in stopping the funds for our community center. And that was at a similarly advanced, ready-to-go phase to make some changes to the plan. I don't want to go back to being that kind of council where a decision can never be considered final. It is disruptive and counterproductive for the community and staff. And I think four of us, however many of us, made this vote a year ago. So, and I don't see that there's new information. There's just louder voices with the same information. But I do not support it, but you, it sounds like you have your three.
You know, just by the way, Jonathan, I've been working on the dog park almost as long as you have, not quite as long, because you were on the Parks Commission before I was. But I was the chair of the Parks Commission when we finally got the first dog park. And I want it, too, really bad. But I also want to do what's right for the community, and I want to do what's right for public health, okay? And we have our three, so this will be on the agenda, and we will take up the issue.
Thank you, Mayor. There's one other future agenda item I'd like to propose. I see on our tentative calendar, coming up on September 30th, we're set to discuss an introduction of ordinance for the Historic Preservation and Mills Act. I'm wondering if there's support to broadening that, so we take up the question of whether we want to continue the policy of issuing Mills Act contracts. I think it's wonderful that we have something in place that encourages historical preservation, but there is a cost to the city, both in terms of the revenue that we receive, in terms of tax dollars, city staff time that's spent on it. I think it would be appropriate for us just to understand what that is, and to decide if we want to make any changes to the policy of entering into those contracts.
I am very interested to learn more about that. I think it's a good question, so I will support that.
I would support having that discussion. That doesn't indicate that I'm going to support exiting the Mills Act, but I would support having that discussion.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Lang, do you have some new business or reports?
Just some reports. Also went to National Night Out. I'll take any excuse I can to go look at a fire engine. And also, I spoke earlier about the Library Commission. I don't want to lapse into discussion, because that's not allowed, but I will say that I, too, have been looking into Flock. The balance between fighting crime and civil liberties in the light of current events seemed like it warranted attention. I want to say, because with our previous meeting, I had some questions and concerns about the website progress. Assistant City Manager Zornz, and City Clerk Thurman, and our great new communications and marketing coordinator, Danielle Kang, arranged to meet with me and go over all of that in a lot of detail. I was very pleased by that. In particular, I was very pleased to see, to understand better that it's very much understood to be a work in progress. One of the things that came out of that meeting was a place for... One of the things that came out of that meeting was a place for residents to report problems with the website, so that we can tighten up the loop of making those improvements. But I just want to express my appreciation to staff for organizing that discussion, which I thought was very helpful. I went to the baseball game versus Los Altos Hills. We're going to have to work on our farm league, we've got some work to do. But it was a great community event, I'm glad that everybody came out, even if the score was not what we might have hoped for. The last thing I'll say is I got a chance, PG&E invited electives from Santa Clara County to go to Diablo Canyon Plant, and boy, that's my idea of an exciting outing, so I went. And it was very interesting. It was on the verge of being shut down, and it provides 9% of California's electricity without emitting any carbon, right? And so it's definitely worth learning about and thinking about. I'll say, the other person who came along with me was Supervisor Otto Lee. Turns out that he has a nice, deep, nerdy streak, so we had a fun time driving around the plant, talking about fission and things like that. So that's it.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, I'll be brief. So unfortunately, I missed National Night Out, I had a work commitment, but I got, I heard reviews from residents, especially the community center portion, and I thought I heard it went really well. So thanks to staff and the chief for putting that together for the community. I will be hosting virtual office hours, I feel like I'm back in COVID, but for different reasons, I'm doing virtual office hours on Friday from 4:30 to 6 via Zoom. It's on the city's website, and I'll have staff send an email out tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned.